All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Aston Township Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, September 15th, 2021 to order. Can we all rise for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this point, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Commissioner Dougherty, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Stegall. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add under new business consideration of a resolution to authorize the Natural Lands Trust to pursue grant opportunities for the township to acquire green space in the township. The reason for the late addition is that yesterday we received documents from Natural Lands Trust outlining the proposed project and schedule for pursuing a grant from the Delaware County Open Space and Greenways Municipal Planning Grant Program. That grant has an application deadline of September 16th, 2021, so we can now wait until next month to authorize the application. I will discuss this further in the meeting, but would like to amend the agenda to add consideration.
Is that a motion?
In the form of a motion. In the form of a motion.
I need a second. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, we have two items on the agenda, the proclamation for the Aston Middletown Little Lee, which, yeah, we're going to table. Thank you. And Citizen of the Year, we're going to table until the October... I'm sorry.
Table.
Yeah. Okay. All right, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 21st, 2021.
Second.
I have a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I'd like to turn over to committee reports. Commissioner Dougherty, please.
I have before me the Treasurers' Report for August 2021. Total cash in the general fund as of August 31st, 2021 was $6,264,122.23. Other funds include the TD Bank Bond Fund Checking Account with a balance of $4,805,354.23; the TD Bank Escrow Checking Account with a balance of $254,224.41; the TD Bank Capital Checking Account with a balance of $731,752.11; and the TD Bank Liquid Fuels Checking Account with a balance of $480,102.90. The total cash balance for the township as of August 31st was $12,963,262.57. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Penday-Grace?
Okay. The following report highlights the main activity of Public Works Department and Highway, which consists of Director of Public Works, Russ Powellmore, and the Highway Department. All metal was picked up throughout the township. All vehicles maintained and serviced. All street light issues were reported to Lennai Electric for replacement or repair. All township parks had branches and trash picked up on the Highway Departments. All park retention ponds and lines were cut, edged, and cleared of trash. All small engine repairs were completed in-house. And 11 coal sheets were reviewed and marked when necessary. Branch pickup started the first full week of the month along with metal pickup. The Highway Repair Stonewall in Morgans Hook Creek in the backyard of a residence on Gooddale Lane. The crew cut down vegetation of various sections of road bank on Gooddale Ring, Mount Road. Our crew painted all township crosswalks. They started hanging the hometown hero banners along Pendle and Concord Road. The Highway Department installed permanent trash cans in Fisher, Poore, and Bridgewater Parks. The department repaired sinkholes on Mount Road, Scott Lane, and Clearwood Lane. They repaired the roadside along Heatherton Drive and Red Hill Road. The repair cost was quoted at 6,500 hours to repair the side of the road on Heaven. The Highway Department completed the repairs for the cost of near umbrellas, which was $700, saving the township approximately $5,800 hours. They also widened Woodcrest Avenue to assist in turning around at the top of the street. Our sanitation department picked up 69.47 tons of recycling and 539.85 tons of residential waste in the month of July. Remember, please remember that the first full week is metal and appliance week and branch pickup. Bulk trash week does not exist anymore. Anything that could be burned can be put out on your curb for trash at any time. Please have your trash at the curb by 6:00 a.m. when you designate a trash day. Any questions or complaints, please contact Russ Powellmore, Director of Public Works, at 610-494-8005. That's completion of my committee report. Mr. Stegall.
Thank you. Please report. Incidents occurred in August 2021. 589 incidents handled, 25 accident investigations, 21 criminal. Clearance rate for Part I crimes is .25. Clearance rate for Part II is .15. Value of stolen property $32,424. Value recovered was $30,200. That number is 55 citations. And that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you. I have several reports or comments to make tonight. First, the Building and Codes Report for the month of August, as we didn't meet in August. Following his report for the permits and licenses issued for the month of August 2021. Beginning balance, $846,495. Total income from building permits and general contractor licenses, $14,775. Total electrical permits and licenses, $367. Total plumbing and heating permits and licenses, $4,730. No income from Board of Health licenses, nor from peddlers and vendors licenses, nor from commercial maintenance inspections. Income from certificates of occupancy is $3,850. Income from rental licenses, $1,350. Total revenue collected, $21,222. Total for 2021 year-to-date was $867,717, as opposed to the prior year where it was Same report for the month of September. The following report is for the permits and licenses issued for the month of September. Actually, I think this is a typo. I think it should be August, and the prior one was July. Following his report for permits and licenses issued for the month of August. Beginning balance, $867,717. Total income from building permits and general contractors licenses, $70,681. Total electrical permits and licenses, $3,343. Total permits in heating, permits and licenses, $9,285. Income from Board of Health licenses, $450. No income from peddlers or vendors licenses and permits, and no income from commercial maintenance inspections. Income from certificates of occupancy, $4,350. Income from rental licenses, $4,800. Income for street openings, $1,765. Total revenue collected, $94,765. Total for 2021 year-to-date, $962,482, as opposed to the same time last year, $394,666. The big difference there is primarily due to the Springbrook Trade Center, as well as licenses and permits that have come in from renovations at Sun Valley High School. Also want to talk a little about a land use update. Everybody knows the United Medical Building at 5027 Pendle Road. For the last couple of years, it's been a total mess, and an eyesore to the township. The developer owns the former United Medical Building at 5027 Pendle Road. Is a process of renovating the exterior of the building. The canopy has already been removed, and now the rest of the building is in the process of being restored. As soon as some structural issues are addressed, the tenant will start renovations to the inside of the building. It is our understanding that Mainline Health will occupy the building. We have not yet issued any building permits for the inside work, and we don't know the exact extent of what they'll be doing in there. We just, we know that it's a medical function for Mainline Health. That will improve the area here up till, to five points. Also, the former mobile car wash. The owner of the property at 3145 Pendle Road, they are in the process of cleaning up the former car wash and will be renovating the current structure, which, when completed, will be a new, modern-looking car wash facility. It's kind of like, looks like, kind of like something in Disneyland. This will not go through the completely redevelopment process, but the developer will be required to upgrade the stormwater management. Next, I think everybody knows that the Township Offices and the Police Department will be relocating the end of this month. So, when I read the official notice. The Aston Township Offices and Police Department located at 5021 Pendle Road here will be relocating to a new office space in the Riddle Valley Industrial Park at Two New Road at the end of September. The phone numbers for the Township Offices and the Police Department will remain the same. The Township Offices will occupy space on the first floor of the Two New Road Building, Suite 123. The Township Offices will be closed on Monday, September 27th for the move and will tentatively reopen on Tuesday, September 28th at 8:00 a.m. Office hours will continue to be 8:00 a.m. through 4:30 p.m. The mailing address for the Township Offices is Aston Township, Suite 123, Two New Road, Aston, PA 19014. The Aston Township Police Department will occupy space in the One New Road Building, Suite 1, which, if you've ever been there, is the former home of the Aston District Court. The Police Department offices will be closed for administrative matters on Thursday, September 30th for the move and will reopen on Friday, October 1st at 8:00 a.m. Office hours will continue to be 8:00 a.m. through 4:00 p.m. For all emergencies, residents should continue to call 911. The mailing address for the Aston Township Police Department is Aston Township Police Department, Suite 1, One New Road, Aston, PA 19014. The after-hours phone used to reach police officers during evening, weekend, and holiday hours will be reinstalled, installed at the front entrance of One New Road. Driving instructions to the new offices will be posted on the glass door at the front of the current municipal building and on the township website and Facebook page. You will be able to scan for directions to the new location. Then on September 28th, directional signs to the new locations will be installed on Pendle Road, Mount Road, and New Road, as well as from Lennai Road, Crozierville Road, and Aston Mills Road. The Public Works Department currently located behind the municipal building here will remain in operation until the Public Works complex is completed. I should say, the new Public Works complex is completed in the spring of 2022. This will be, like I said, posted out there on the social media. There are, there's a pile of these notices over there on the podium if you would like to take one with you. That's all I have. Thank you. Oh, Jim points out a good point. The tax collector is part of the Township Offices, and that will also be moving to Two New Road. It's in the township, physically in the township space, so there's no need to give out a suite number, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Bowden, please.
I don't have a fire report this month, but I want to give you a Board of Health report. To date, we have 52 inspections. They've issued 42 health licenses, and not until payment is received from the businesses. 10 businesses have not paid for their health inspections to date. So, all the complaints that we have received were true, and they have been followed up on. I have a report from the library. This is from Stephen Sarazin, the librarian. The library is now open for these hours each week. Monday, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Tuesday and Wednesday, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Thursday and Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Saturdays, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Copying and public computing and faxing are also available. Please save the date for Saturday, October 23rd. The Friends of the Library hope to have a bingo fundraiser again that evening. I also have from the senior citizens. They're going to have their first meeting since the COVID has hit in 2019, and it's going to be September 28th at the Community Center. It's a luncheon, 10:45. If you come to the luncheon and pay your dues, which are $10 for the year, you'll receive a free hoagie for your lunch. They like to encourage everyone to do that. The other thing that I'd like to report on is I'd like to publicly thank our Public Works Department at this moment for what they did. I'm sure you all have seen the wonderful banners that our banner committee has put together for our hometown heroes that line our streets of Pendle Road and Concord Road and eventually Dutton Mill Road. And these were all installed by our Public Works Department, and they have done an exceptional job in doing that. And also, there will be another 50, we have 50 banners up at this given moment that were printed. The next batch will be another 50, and there's probably going to be a third batch. So, with that being said, anybody out there that would like to get a hometown hero banner for your loved one, please follow, go to the website. The instructions are on there. The application is on there. Feel free to, and your $100 check will be glad to take that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner McGinn?
Nothing for tonight.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report. I have a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Need a motion to approve the Bills and Payroll Report. Second. Questions or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, at this time, I'd like to open up the floor to the public. If anyone has an agenda item, if you want to say something, please come to the podium. Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to the next item, and I'm going to call on Commissioner Higgins, please.
Thank you. I'd like to consider a motion to place the meeting in sendai.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our Township Solicitor, Mrs. Naughton-Bach.
Thank you, Commissioner Stegall. First on the agenda for this incendiary portion of the meeting is the conditional use application of Graditim LLC, purchaser and equitable owner, and McGee Industries Incorporated, proposed less C, to manufacture, store, and distribute water-based products and to support distribution of finished aerosolized products on property located at 5 Crozierville Road. Because the proposed activities involve chemical processes, conditional use approval is required pursuant to Section 127803(c) of the Township's zoning code. The property is located in the LI District. Public notice of tonight's hearing was advertised in the August 31st and September 7th edition of the Daily Times. That notice also, which I will have the publication notice introduced into evidence in the file. The property was posted, and notice was mailed to the adjacent property owners. Counsel for the applicant, Jason Herring, is here tonight along with a few witnesses. Mr. Herring, if you'd like to come to the podium, and at this point, I would turn the hearing over to you if you'd like to introduce your witnesses. I know you have a few, and I, it's, obviously, I'll defer to you as to what order you want to handle them.
Okay. Only question I'd ask, would you like to swear them all at the same time, or should I, we call them up individually? Do they stay in their seats, or?
That's probably a good idea. Let's, let's call them up at the same time, and then that way, because with, with your permission and with the board's permission, with each witness, because I just asked you to explain, because I know that you and I have spoken, that some of them are going to address certain areas.
Certainly.
So, the conclusion of their testimony, if you think it would be appropriate, then we could ask specific questions to that individual.
Certainly. Certainly. However, the board prefers to do it, it's certainly fine with us. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Herring, and I'm an attorney at Whistler Perlstein. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, McGee Industries, and Graditim LLC. Thanks very much for taking the time to hear our application tonight. As Ms. Naughton-Bach mentioned, we have four witnesses that are going to testify tonight. The first is Christopher Knoll, who is the Chief Operating Officer of McGee Industries; Dr. Gordon White, who is the Technical Director of McGee Industries; Todd Lambert, who is the Fire Protection Engineer for our project; and Carl Holden, who is the architect for our project. Gentlemen, would you?
Why don't you stand and?
Swear them in now.
Can you raise your hand please? Raise your hand please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that your back's been reviewed and checked level two and have the proof?
Okay. First will be Christopher Knoll.
Can you just say your name, please, and thought? Or not decide? Just try.
A-N-O-E-L-L.
Everyone able to hear, Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I know you just did, but please state your name.
Chris Knoll.
Okay, and where are you employed?
I am employed at McGee Industries and I'm over in Borough.
Okay. What's your position with McGee Industries?
I am the gentleman.
Okay. Can you briefly tell the board about your education and work experience?
So, I have a BA in International Business from George Washington, and I've worked for the Industries full-time since August of 2017. Prior to that, for summer, starting in 2016, I worked in production and then worked in marketing, and as a faculty deputy prior to that. In June of 2013, I was the new manager of the firm, and I was also the partner and chief officer of the firm.
I'm sorry, if I could just jump in, this township will stipulate to the extent any of these individuals are going to be considered expert witness in whatever capacity. If you could just identify the purpose for their testimony and what you're offering them for.
Okay, we'll present their CVs for the record and we can stipulate. Okay. Mr. Knoll, let me just say thank you for your service. Where are McGee's operations currently located?
9 Crozierville Road.
Okay, and that's very close to the property that we're discussing tonight, 5 Crozierville Road, correct? How long has the company been located there?
Since February 1974.
Okay, and is it correct that you're the, your company is the equitable owner of 5 Crozierville at the moment, meaning you have an agreement of sale to purchase the property?
5 Crozierville Road.
Yes. Notice the application lists an entity called Graditim LLC. Could you just explain what that is and how it's related to McGee?
So, Graditim was formed by one of our owners to purchase bills, they property, and we just.
Since McGee already owns the property at 9 Crozierville Road, what's the, the purpose of acquiring 5 Crozierville Road as well?
We need more space for storage, as well as to expand manufacturing operations.
Okay. Had you been looking at space in other areas, or was, was the plan to possibly have to locate this facility elsewhere?
Yes, so we previously had property in Carstown under agreement when 5 Crozierville came onto the market. It's right down the street, it's pretty easy for our employees to get to, so we needed to bend the other path to see if it was available.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir Knoll?
Okay. Mr. Knoll, is this a copy of the conditional use application that you submitted for the property?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Not sure the microphone is on. I see you have a microphone.
It was recorded at home, that's why.
Okay. Okay. Could you just explain in the word briefly how you intend to use 5 Crozierville Road if you acquire it?
So, we intend to keep 9 Crozierville Road and move some of our operation to 5 Crozierville Road, specifically production of our water-based lubricants and storage of finished aerosols for distribution.
What is the size of the building?
It's approximately 27,000 square feet.
Okay. So, I notice you mentioned water-based products. Could you explain briefly the processes that'll be used to, to make those products at the facility?
Sure. If I was asked to put one, one word to it, it would be mixing. Essentially, what we do to make the water-based lubricants is we fill a vessel, you know, probably around 80% full with water or more, and then we add raw materials to it, you know, at specific times and intervals while we mix. You know, once the batch is complete, we'll test it to make sure the, the quality is right, and then it's run into the different containers that we would sell it in. So, 1-gallon containers, 5-gallon pails, 55-gallon drums, and occasionally 275-gallon totes.
Okay. Are the products that are manufactured or intended to be manufactured, they're flammable?
So, the finished products are non-flammable. Most of the raw materials are also non-flammable. We have a few raw materials that are used in, I would say, maybe 25% of the products, maybe 1/3 that are flammable. Not a whole lot of them is used, which, you know, results in a finished product that is also non-flammable. And, you know, because we don't need to use a whole lot in our water-based products, there aren't a lot of flammable substances, you know, that would be planned to be kept at 5 Crozierville.
Is the information in the conditional use application about the types and quantities of raw materials that would be stored at the facility, is that accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, we provided a list of what would be hazardous.
Okay. Could you tell the board, I think you, you may have just done it, but a little bit about how the materials will be stored on-site?
Sure. So, we'll have heavy racking. Essentially, the container for raw materials will be the container that it was shipped to us in, so 49 CFR, IATA-certified, you know, something durable enough for shipping. Finished products, same thing. They'll be stored in the containers that they're going to be shipped in, on pallets, in heavy racking.
Do the processes that'll be employed at the facility create any loud noise or fumes?
So, the water-based processes don't involve heat or pressurizing anything flammable. There aren't any byproducts, you know, like, you know, exhaust or anything like that. As far as noise, just by way of reference, the machinery that we have would be, a lawnmower is significantly louder than the machinery that we require, you know, we have at our current facility. And to my knowledge, since 1974, we've never had a complaint of odor or noise.
Okay, thank you. Is there any waste from the processes, and if so, how is that dealt with?
So, the manufacturing process doesn't create any byproducts, like I mentioned. Everything that we put in the vessel, we're putting into the containers and we're shipping out the door. If we have a product that goes bad on our shelf while we're waiting to ship it, you know, what we have is a 275-gallon waste tote. You know, the bad product will be put in there, and when that tote is full, a third-party will come and pick it up and destroy it off-site. That third-party is Univar. The only other waste that we'll generate is when we clean the mixing vessels. We'll spray around, scrub the vessel, and then, you know, that little bit of cleaning liquid will be run into a pail and also put in that 275-gallon waste tote for destruction when it's full.
Okay. Could you tell the board about any special safety apparatus or improvements that you intend to make at the property?
So, we're going to add a sprinkler system, iWash, iWash stations. We'll mark the floor to control movement. We'll have spill kits and, you know, other standard safety devices, fire extinguishers and such.
Okay. What are the anticipated hours of operation at the property?
Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Okay. How many trucks would you anticipate coming in and out of the site each day?
Just to clarify, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Trucks, right now, we have on average, I would say, 3 to 5 per day, because our plan is to split our operations between- Because our plan is to split our operations between nine and five Crozer. You know, that would split the number of trucks. So five Crozer would probably be one to three trucks a day on average. And then our current facility would go down to one to three trucks on average as well.
How do trucks access the site?
At Five Crozerville, the previous tenant manufactured enormous industrial doors that would be shipped in similar tractor trailers like our products might be. The tractor trailers would back up to the dock in the manner that they have been for quite a while.
And how many employees do you anticipate at the facility?
So in the short term, 12. We plan to add three more, probably within the next, I would say, two to four years.
I have nothing further for this witness. For the board questions.
If I can ask a few questions and then I'll try, if you're okay with you. Just for purposes of clarification, your current facility at Nine Crozerville Road. What's going to be different at Five Crozerville, if at all? Or are you going to be doing the same thing just at an additional location?
So the main difference is the products that we're going to create. So we have sort of two distinct lines. They're solvent-based or water-based. And the solvent-based, we will move this, the water-based production over to Five Crozerville.
Okay. Is the safety precautions or stations that you talked about with the adding a sprinkler system, the iWash stations, spill kits, and marking the floor. Are these practices that are all currently in place at Nine Crozerville Road?
The sprinkler system is. The floor marking, no. We've attempted to do it, but we make lubricants and it's hard to get the paint to stick. But if we put it in before we really use the building, it'll be a lot easier. We use floor tapes at the current facility, they stick a little bit better.
I have some questions with respect to activities that have taken place at Nine Crozerville Road. More specifically, fire calls. Would you be the appropriate person to be answering my questions or do you have another witness that's going to?
I may not be able to recall an exact date or anything like that, but I think I have a pretty good memory about what we might be talking about, so sure.
Okay. There, we did do a search just to see how many fire calls had taken place at Nine Crozerville. And the search went back to 2013. So during that time period, there were two building fires, one in 2015 and one in 2020. Both were considered to be flash fires. Do you have any recollection as to what occurred in those occasions?
So at 2015, I wouldn't have been there. Dr. Gordon White would have been. I don't know if there's a technical definition of what a flash fire is. So the other fire was in what year?
2020.
So that I do recall. And what happened, if you've ever walked across an apartment and then touched a doorknob and you got a little shock. So static discharge caused one of our drums to ignite. And the fire was put out almost immediately by fire extinguisher. In response to that, you know, since 1974, that hadn't happened. In response to that, we got all of our production employees, specific clothes that aren't going to generate a lot of static. They wear shoes that continually discharge static. We installed, reinstalled, and re-inspected grounding wires and retrained on grounding.
Okay. So that product that ignited, will that product be manufactured in Five Crozerville Road?
No, that was a solvent-based product. So the fires that I am aware of did not involve any of the Five Crozerville processes or raw materials.
Okay. And then there were 2013, 18, 19, and 21, just, the fire company just reported there were fire alarms, that the fire alarm was triggered. I don't know any details behind that. I'm not sure if you're familiar with any frequency with which fire alarms have gone off.
So I know that on two occasions, our forklift has impacted the actual sprinkler system, which causes the sprinkler system to go off. On another occasion, somebody was smoking an e-cigarette in a bathroom and that set the fire alarm off. And then on another occasion, someone sprayed a lot of air freshener in the bathroom, which also caused the fire alarm to go off.
Okay. All right. So you addressed my questions about additional truck traffic. I think those are the questions that I had, well, with respect to you. Commissioners?
One quick question. I see the list of hazardous materials planned for Five Crozerville. You have some flammables, you have some corrosives, you have some oxidizers. They're all relatively small quantities. I'm just wondering, since 1974 at Nine Crozerville, have you ever had any spills of significance in terms of environmental danger? Anything that spilled, anything required EPA involvement or?
No.
No, okay.
No, I mean, we're a chemical company, we make liquid lubricants. There are spills, they're cleaned up.
But nothing's going into the creek or the, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just have one question for you. I'm just, I want to make sure I heard this right. You're saying you keep your volatile materials in the storage? And where are they stored? What type of container or whatever?
Are you referring to the?
Stuff you get in before you make.
Facility? So the, at our plant facility, sir?
Yeah.
So what we'll do is we'll receive the raw materials on a pallet in drums. Depending on what they are, there's a couple on there. And then they will be, you know, we're going to, I think that the maximum quantity is about 57 gallons or 55 gallons for, that's the largest. So that'll be kept in the drum that it comes in. That'll be a metal drum. The lid will be kept shut. And then there'll be a working metal pail where the. Out, which is not, you know, a large quantity that's going in these water-based products. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, just, again, maybe I misheard you on that. I thought you said you took your volatile material when it comes in, you had like a storage closet or something. Or, you know, a base type thing where you could store it without having any problems. You're saying it's got right on the open floor, it's never stored anywhere, except for in that drum.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm good.
It's my understanding that at the quantity, some sort of specially adapted room or cabinet would.
I got a quick question. Could I ask what your safety record is, injuries, lost times? Just to estimate, you know, is it?
I'm going to try to think back to our last work-related injury. It may not have, it may not have been when I was even there.
Could this be caused by those flash fires or is it just that slip and fall thing?
Flash fires did not cause injury.
Okay. All right, good, thank you.
All right, I have a quick question. Are you regulated by the state as far as the way your facility is constructed?
I would imagine that there are regulations to the way that our facility is constructed. I would not be able to answer that question off the top of my head.
All right, what about OSHA?
Yes.
So you follow OSHA's recommendations?
We do. We had an OSHA inspection, I want to say, maybe about two years ago. There was one suggestion from the OSHA inspector, which we followed through with and demonstrated full compliance.
Okay. Will they review the new building? OSHA?
It's my understanding that if you contact OSHA, they will send a representative down to walk through, make any suggestions. And I am very interested in doing that. When we start to get closer to, you know, having some of the equipment in there, I might like to show a list of equipment and, you know, our final floor plan. Interested in doing that.
Okay. And then I believe I read something that you produce 30 to 300 gallons at a time? Is that correct?
So our batch sizes are going to, are going to, I mean, we may have, we have a lot of standard products that are bought from, and we also make specialty lubricants. And we make a lubricant that is used on aircraft carrier catapults and things like that. Not a huge volume. Our batch sizes can be anywhere from about five gallons to three hundred gallons.
Okay, all right. So let's hypothetically say a three, you develop a 300 gallon spill. How do you absorb the spill? Do you have dry material that you throw on it? Or do you have like a tarp that absorbs? Or is it, are you like lower than the actual grade going outside?
The first line of defense for a spill is the 10-gauge stainless steel tank, it's an automatic shut-off valve. After that, we'll have spill kits. They have like curbing on them that you can, it's sort of flexible. Go around and contain the spill to a specific area. And then after that, you know, the spill kit will contain some sort of, like powder wood chips, something like that, that you can toss on it to help absorb it. And then, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, shoveling it into a container.
Well, once you get it controlled and getting rid of it, that's the other part. But I'm saying, so your spill kits, I mean, I'm familiar with spill kits. So they're capable of handling worst-case scenario, 300 gallons?
I would think so. I can't think of a lot of scenarios where 300 gallons would, you know, be all of a sudden on the floor all at once.
Well, you can handle more than 30, though.
Sure.
Okay.
And, you know, we're going to have, you know, like under, you know, we might have a batch size of 55 gallons or 275 gallons. And those will be produced sitting on a pallet. It's like a spill containment pallet. It's, you know, it's like a grid with a reservoir underneath it. So smaller containers, you know, that's the plan as well.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you. You obviously have an insurance carrier, being in your business. Most large insurance carriers provide loss control services. Do you, in order to, they make recommendations on how you should, you know, have safety in the business and so forth. Do you have them come into your office or to your factory?
At our current facility, we do, yes. And I have, you know, throughout the preliminary design process, we have at times brought in our underwriter to take a look at things. They have an expert fire professional. Been a bit helpful with, you know, figuring out what sprinkler requirements might be. They have, they have insights into, you know, curbing for racking and things like that and a lot of the smaller other things. So that, you know, they will definitely be involved in sort of the final building plan. And, you know, the smaller things, they get worked out in the wash as we move in.
Okay, thank you. Does the building you're going to be in now, is there an office area in the building?
Yes, sir. So the front of the building, there's, there's a, there's essentially an addition in front of the building, which is two floors of office space.
Two floors?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that area insulated from the production area in case of a fire?
I'm going to defer to the fire protection expert and the architect that we have here to specifically answer that question. I do not have the expertise to tell you that.
So could you answer that? That person's here, right?
So, Todd Lambert, L-A-M-B-E, R-T. The occupancy classifications of the building are such that with the sprinklers, there is no requirement for soft fire separation of the office.
Okay, thank you. Last question. How close are, is the building before and buildings that are before and after yours? How close are they to you? Roughly.
Before, so the building's on either side of Five Crozerville?
Yeah.
I do not know exactly. I would say, you know, at least, I would say at least in the area of 100 feet. But I do not know for sure.
That's good. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Bud?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner McGinn?
Sure, good evening.
How are you?
Just a few questions for you. So the first thing, just to help folks understand with McGee Industries and businesses like yours, you talked about aerosols, water-based lubricants. Folks outside of the industry don't get a whole lot of feel for that. You did mention it's used on, for example, aircraft carrier. So just for folks' help and understanding of what you do, you know, what are the other, you know, uses or familiar uses of the products that you make?
Sure. So most American-made cars, there's either a part or a part that was assembled coated in our lubricant or made using our lubricant. We are used to lubricate the production of medical staples. We found out this past year that our products were being used to make a part of the COVID test kits for Thermo Fisher Scientific. We make an anti-stick agent that is used on the trash compactors inside large naval vessels. After I got out of the Marine Corps, I found out that the rocket system that I operated, the tube was made with our products. Most of the business that we do is in the automotive industry, parts, hoses, and things like that. And then we also have a line of consumer sailing products that are used to coat sailboats, the bottom of sailboats and things like that.
Thanks, that's helpful and I think people appreciate understanding what you guys make in town.
I was told to keep it brief, so I skipped over it.
That's fair. Nobody told us that, clearly, right? So in terms of permitting and things like that, I assume the answer's yes. But I'll ask, do you guys intend to apply for any required permits for the township and other regulatory entities to move forward with the development?
I believe our architect might be able to speak to that, but obviously the typical use and occupancy certificate and whatever else the township typically would require, obviously, we'll be subject to. We don't anticipate that there's any land development or anything like that necessary here because the building footprint, impervious coverage, stormwater, none of that is changing.
Right, okay. And then everything you were describing, and I think it was mentioned earlier, this is all indoors, is that correct?
Yes.
And then I think you touched on noise from an odor standpoint at this facility or others? Have there ever been odor issues related to your activities?
To my knowledge, since 1974, no one has ever complained about an odor issue.
Okay. And then from, folks talked about occupational health and safety. So with mixing and chemicals, with what you're mixing, does it require like SCBA or anything like that? What do the employees have to wear for protective equipment?
Our operators have goggles and respirators. A lot of our raw materials are pretty innocuous and aren't going to, you know, be an inhalation hazard. Most of the raw materials that we have are PTFE, so Teflon, the stuff that coats pans, waxes, and silicons. You know, there are some, there are some raw materials that we have that don't smell great. And they'll use a respirator when handling those.
Sure, but nothing in terms of outdoors, so if you think of neighbors' issues. Do you guys require any DEP permits or anything like that?
I don't believe so.
Okay. For the employees, you know, with handling materials like this, obviously, training comes into a factor to mitigate all risks. What type of training do employees go through?
So the first thing that employees do is they're, they usually assist the shipper. And then they are slowly introduced to the products. They'll be told, you know, break this five gallon pail into five gallon, five individual gallons. Employees always start with handling the water-based products. A lot of the training goes into the appropriate mixing requirements, you know, learning where fire extinguishers are, learning where the safety equipment is. We have a, I think, once a year, people have to get certified on the respirators. They have to get a medical certification. And they have a test where they shake their head and do jumping jacks. Our more experienced employees are the ones that handle the solvents. And there's a lot of training into the proper way to ground the different containers. Did I answer your question?
It does, yeah. And the parking lot at the site, is it currently paved asphalt or is it, what is?
At Five Crozerville, it's currently paved and lined.
Okay. Do you have, will there be any additional truck traffic, heavy trucks? I know you talked about employees, but with, you know, deliveries, you know, things like that, what do we, what would we expect on additional trucks?
On average, I would say that, well, I don't know, I'd be, I'm not sure if the word additional is the right one. I mean, we're splitting our operations between two buildings. So all of the truck traffic that goes to our current building, it'll kind of be split between the two. I estimate one to three tractor trailers per business day. And then a FedEx box truck and a UPS box truck comes once a day at 4:00 p.m.
Okay. Well, so is this, are you going to be able to grow your business with this or is it just basically?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, one of the reasons why we're purchasing a larger facility and just moving the water-based products. Yes. Um, you know, one of the reasons why we're purchasing a larger facility and just moving the water-based products there is because we want to, um, work more with the water-based products. We've had several opportunities in the last few years where we simply didn't have the capacity to make what a customer wanted. So we had to let it go. Um, so we started looking for more space very aggressively.
Okay. And in terms of hiring, I think you, you mentioned twelve employees and three, uh, potentially three more.
Sure.
So is that, just to clarify, is that the current employee count that you have twelve? And this would bring three new jobs?
We have twenty in the United States.
No, but I mean in, in Aston, at the facility.
I think that, um, three at the new facility is probably about accurate.
Okay.
We have a desire to expand, um, R and D and our sales staff, um, you know, over the next two to three years when I find the appropriate candidates. In the short term, I believe that, uh, we're going, just because of the nature of having two facilities, we'll add probably one to two production positions full-time.
Okay, in Aston?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the, um, i- in terms of, uh, are there any benefits to other businesses in that industrial park or opportunities as you guys grow? Is this gonna lead potentially to anybody else in the area to grow or maybe be attracted to the business park?
I can't really speak to that. It's sort of a what-if.
Speculative, I know.
I know that we sell to, you know, we sell to thousands of different companies all around the country. And, uh, you know, I don't wanna sound arrogant, but I love to be able to make them more product to give them.
Yeah, fair enough. Well, the last piece is just more of a comment than a question. But, uh, if this is approved and you guys expand your operations, are able to grow your employees, you know, I'd love to, you know, have you, you know, share with us in terms of when those are posted and maybe folks that are in Aston, uh, would be able to apply for the positions.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Fescuzi, you have any questions?
Not for this witness.
Okay, just wanna make sure you're awake there. All right, next.
Very interesting.
Yeah.
Nothing further for this witness?
Next witness.
Okay. Okay, uh, for our, our three expert witnesses, uh, as I understand, what, uh, the board is very kindly willing to stipulate as to their, uh, their expertise, I will just hand up their, uh, CVs. Uh, our next witness will be Dr. Gordon White.
What do we, what else do we need to get? What, what, what else are we trying to, cause you're moving from one location to another?
Right.
Yeah, why don't you just say which witness is intended to testify to?
Okay, uh, Dr. White was gonna talk a bit about the manufacturing process, if the board wishes to hear it, um, if, if that's.
I think our main concern, you're already established in Aston. Um, our main concern is what the expansion and the safety issue for the residents in that area. I think that was our main concern. Um, again, uh, you've, uh, great company. I mean, you're, you know, fire calls and all that kind of stuff. I mean, we're not, we're not getting a panic call from the, the fire marshal saying, don't do it, you know? Um, I think we, you know, again, you're a good business in Aston and we look forward to hopefully, um, letting you expand and be a partner in Aston. So I think we're satisfied with, the, the health and safety was the main concern that we had.
Okay, so you're satisfied with the one witness's testimony? They do have, they do have a fire expert here in case you were interested.
I think he answered one question, yeah. But I think we're, we're, we have enough information to make a decision.
Could, could I just ask, then I had one question?
Sure.
I just had one cl- clarification on the plan. I heard, um, you say, uh, no land development, uh, which, which I agree with, right? But I, but I'm seeing, uh, on the plan that was submitted, a seven thousand square foot addition, new parking spaces, uh, stormwater management. Is that from an old plan?
I guess that's.
Right, so that's, you're not doing any building expansion or any?
No building expansion, just.
Got it. I just wanted clarification, cause that's on the exhibit, so.
Uh, we use that just to show that, uh, the site plan.
Okay, so for the record, we, we understand there's no, no building addition.
If you, if you'd like to identify your witnesses, submit their, um, their resumes for, um, we can introduce them into the record and just say what they were prepared to testify to address the respective issues.
That's sufficient. Uh, my only concern, of course, uh, you know, certainly respect the board's time and, and don't wanna misuse it. But, uh, just making a record, cause obviously we have to come out of this hearing for you to vote.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, just making sure that we have at least kind of the final expert opinion from each of the three experts. I think I could probably do it in one or two questions for each in.
Go ahead.
Two, three minutes if, if that doesn't bother the board. So, um, Dr. White, uh, if I could just ask you, you've worked for the company for how long?
I've worked for the, uh, McGee Industries for, uh, Mason by twenty-four years.
Okay, okay. Um, in your expert opinion, uh, do you expect any of the processes to produce any, uh, noxious odors at the proposed facility?
No.
Okay. And in your experience, in your expert opinion, uh, will the limited, the listed quantities of each of the materials in the application, uh, will that create, uh, a substantial danger of fire or explosion, explosion, excuse me?
No.
Okay, and do you have any safety concerns about the storage and use of the listed materials in the building, uh, by the proposed applicant? Thank you, Dr. White. Moving right along. Uh, Todd Lambert, who's our, our, uh, fire protection engineer. Hand up his, uh.
You can give it to me at the end.
I suppose I can give it to you after. Thanks. All right. Um, Mr. Lambert, you, you heard that, uh, the expectation is to install sprinklers in the entire building. Is that your understanding?
The building is currently unsprinkled and we will be performing.
Okay. Uh, do you have an opinion as to the appropriateness of this building for the proposed use?
Uh, yeah, I think it's, it's, uh, certainly appropriate for, uh, a low-level hazard that we have building on.
Okay. In your opinion, is the amount of flammable material that's proposed to be kept at the property similar to other light industrial users?
Yeah, for, compared to the, the types of buildings that I deal with day-to-day, this is sort of made up on very low end.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry to cut you off. Uh, do you expect that the proposed use will create a substantial danger of fire explosion?
No.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to review, uh, the provisions of the Aston Township zoning ordinance, section twelve eighty entitled Performance Standards?
I have, and, uh, I have a signed letter here, a certification of that performance standard, if that's needed.
We did prepare that, which I, I'd like to hand in, Ms. Notenbeck.
That'd be great.
Okay, so then it's safe to say that you believe that we meet the standards of, of that provision in the ordinance? Okay, uh, I have no further questions for this witness. From the board. All right, next is Carl Holden, who's our architect. Again, we'll, we'll, uh, provide his CV. Just cutting to the chase here, sorry, excuse me. Um, Mr. Holden, did you review all the applicable, uh, building fire, uh, other applicable codes to this property and, and the proposed use?
I have, yes.
Okay. Uh, what's your expert conclusion regarding this project's compliance with those codes and ordinances? Okay. Uh, in your opinion, is there sufficient parking at the property?
I do believe so, yes.
Okay. If necessary, is the applicant able to add parking?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And, and is there, uh, an exhibit that, that shows, uh, where those spices, spaces could be added if necessary? Okay. Okay. And we'll provide that, that plan as well. Uh, in your expert opinion, is the proposed use app, appropriate for the site?
Yes.
Okay. And is it compatible with the character of the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes.
And avoids interference with, uh, other, with uses on adjacent properties?
Uh, yes.
Uh, will the proposed use serve the best interests of the township, convenience of the community and public health, safety and welfare?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, in your expert opinion, will the proposed use promote the orderly development, proper population density and the provision of adequate community facilities and services, including police and fire protection?
Yes.
Okay. In your expert opinion, will the proposed use be suitable in terms of its effect on traffic safety and circulation? And, uh, that access onsite circulation and parking are adequate in view of anticipated traffic? Thank you. Thank you for indulging that. Uh, okay, tried to do it as fast as I could.
Listen, I, I, I appreciate, no, you were very thorough in your presentation. And again, um, we discussed this at workshop and most of the board's concerns were safety for the residents in the surrounding businesses. So I thank you for your presentation. Do you have anything else?
Uh, I don't. Uh, I just thank you for your time. We'd asked that our, uh, exhibits be moved into the record and
Mm-hmm.
thank you very much again.
So, thank you.
And if, cause we do need to open up to the public if anyone.
Yes, I know. Does the board have any other questions?
I have a question. It's more for Joe Fescuzzo. So, one, I, I imagine in terms of, uh, this might be a Southwest, a municipal authority question. But I think in terms of wastewater, things like that, that would have to be reviewed there to make sure the appropriate pre-treatment and all that's done.
Yes. I mean, there's a separate, as you know, there's a separate, um, uh, requirement to go through for industrial discharge.
Yeah.
I think they ship their, um, contaminants off-site.
So you don't, you, you don't, uh, require the pre-treatment program? Okay, great. Okay.
It's either going in our, going in our containers to be shipped or it's going in waste, so it's stored offsite.
Yeah. And then the other question.
The only sewage generator is bathrooms.
Yes.
That's dangerous.
Apparently that's dangerous.
So the other question's with our road program. We just did a portion of Crozerville Road, um, and, uh, heading down towards that way, towards Mal Pleasant. So if this requires any, with this review of curbing, I'm not sure what the existing conditions is, but things like that that would protect the roadway and, and make it last longer?
Yeah, that, it, I mean, as they indicated, they weren't doing any, they're not doing any building additions or anything like that. And, um, uh, so it, it seems to me that they're, they're probably just gonna apply for building permits. But if during the construction process, any, uh, degradation of the road, they'd have to repair.
And same with curbing if, if that's needed. Okay, thanks.
There is curbing there already, but.
Is that it? Okay. Anybody in the audience have a question? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Notenbeck and I just ask before we close, uh, the record, will the township engineer review letter be, uh, made part of the record as well?
Yes, we can.
If you'd like. Great, thank you very much.
Okay, um, we have another line item.
Yes, next matter on the agenda is consideration, um, uh, actually on your agenda later tonight is consideration of an ordinance to adopt a seasonal outdoor dining ordinance. Um, this is an application of the township to add a section to the township zoning code to provide regulations for allowing outdoor seasonal dining. Pursuant to section six oh nine of the municipality's planning code, requires public notice of tonight's hearing as well as consideration of the ordinance adoption to be advertised. This was done so in the August thirty-first and September seventh edition of Delaware County Daily Times. Prior to tonight's hearing, the application was reviewed by the Aston Township Planning Commission on August twenty-fifth, which recommended approval. Was also reviewed by the Delaware County Planning Commission that also recommended approval. Their meeting was on July thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, because the proposed regulations will be located in the zoning code and more specifically a new section, which will be, uh, section twenty-nine of chapter twelve ninety-two. The, this, this hearing is required. Um, as you're aware, the backstory is during the pandemic, outdoor dining became far more common and desirable. Uh, while dining indoors is now permitted, there was an interest by the board, um, to encourage and support restaurants throughout the town to, to provide this type of dining experience in appropriate weather. Um, so as such, the ordinance committee prepared and, um, a proposed ordinance that sets regulations for outdoor dining between the months of April first and October thirty-first. I know the full text of the ordinance is gonna be read later tonight, but, uh, for purposes of the hearing, the, um, significant, um, matters that are gonna be addressed are, um, outdoor dining is permitted between the hours of seven A M. and eleven P M., except where the restaurant, uh, joins a residential use, in which case it's permitted between seven A M. and nine P M. Outdoor sound amplification sub-systems are prohibited. Um, alcoholic beverage service, uh, must be properly licensed by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and is permitted only in conjunction with the service of food. Um, portable heating devices with an open flame are prohibited unless they are in a, in an approved, um, vessel by the fire marshal. Um, and then all other state and federal, uh, regulations are applicable. And there are specific, you know, there's, there's an application that's gonna be submitted to the, um, code enforcement office and the annual fee is seventy-five dollars. Any questions?
All right, anyone in the, uh, audience, uh, public? Yeah, we need your name and address.
Come up here and talk.
Yeah, if you come up to the podium.
My name's Adam Civilich, six thirty-eight Convent Road. I just have one question. Is there any chance that this amendment would impact, um, the ability of food trucks to operate around the township?
That's a separate issue. That's, that's not, that wouldn't be followed under this regulation.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? All right, seeing none.
That concludes my business. Thank you.
That concludes that. So I'd like to call on Commissioner Higgins, please.
I'd like to consider a motion to take the meeting out of sendai.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, moving on, old business line item A, consider a motion to approve the conditional use request. I'd like to call Commissioner McGinn, please.
Yes, before I do, Jason and everyone else on the McGee team, thank you for taking the time to come out and answer all our questions. Appreciate it, uh, appreciate the steps you take to make sure that there aren't any impacts to the outside community. As somebody with the commissioners, we split up into seven wards. Industrial Park is within our ward and the neighbors there, so I appreciate you taking the time to, to answer all that. And I also appreciate you growing your business and adding and creating jobs in Aston Township. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use request of Graditum LLC and McGee Industries to manufacture, store and distribute water-based products that contain low quantities of hazardous raw materials at property located at five Crozerville Road, Aston, P A, one nine zero one four.
Second.
All right, I have a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Line item B, consider a motion adopting a seasonal outdoor dining ordinance. Commissioner Berry, please.
Thank you, President Stigall. Consider a motion adopting a seasonal outdoor dining ordinance. Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, ordinance number one zero one seven. It's an ordinance of the township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, to amend chapter twelve ninety-two of the Aston Township codified ordinances to adopt regulations for seasonal outdoor dining. Whereas the Aston Township Board of Commissioners has noticed an increase in the number of restaurants seeking to provide outdoor dining for their patrons, and whereas the Aston Township Board of Commissioners believe that setting regulations for outdoor dining is necessary to ensure the safety practices are being followed and providing an outdoor dining experience while supporting local restaurants throughout the township. And whereas the township, Aston Township Board of Commissioners believes that establishing an ordinance permitting seasonal outdoor dining in the township is in the best interest of health, safety and welfare of residents of the township, now therefore be it resolved this fifteenth day of September two thousand and twenty-one, that chapter twelve ninety-two of the Aston Township codified ordinance entitled Supplemental Regulations is hereby amended to reflect the addition of subsection twenty-nine, setting forth regulations for seasonal outdoor dining as set forth in the attached document, which is, which is incorporated herein by reference, references if the same set forth at length. Effective date this ordinance shall be effective within ten days from date of adoption. Repeal or any prior ordinance or parts thereof inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Severability, the provisions of this ordinance and code sections adopted are severable and if any clause, sentence or section there, thereof shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such decision or judgment shall not affect the validity of the remaining precision, provisions. Attested due by Kelly, A. Pippen Township Secretary and by James M. Stigall, President, Board of Commissioners. And that's in the form of a motion and I'll read the ordinance after, after the vote, I guess.
Yes. All right, I have a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Again, Commissioner Berry.
I need a breath. Well.
Mr., I think, you know, we talked about this before. Beth, uh, pretty much covered it. I don't think you need to get through that.
Okay.
Unless you want to.
Thank you. No, it's, she covered the timeline and all that, so.
Yeah, and, uh, we're just trying to help the businesses, um, you know, get with the times, that people enjoy outdoor dining. Trying to do what we can for that.
Yeah, and if anybody wants the details, we can obviously share email.
Yes, we have them.
All right, thank you.
All right. Under new business line item A, consider accepting, uh, the minimum municipal obligation for the police pension plan. Commissioner Dockerty, please.
I make a motion to approve the minimum municipal obligation for the police pension plan. This is for the year twenty twenty-two in the amount of one million, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-seven. Is it one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars? Well, sorry, one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, ninety-seven dollars, uh, in the form of a motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Line item B, Consider Accepting the, yeah, Minimum Municipal Obligation for the Non-Uniform Employees. Commissioner Dougherty.
Yeah, it's a mouthful.
It is.
I make a motion to approve the minimum municipal obligation for the non-uniformed employee pension plan, again, for the year 2022, in the amount of $132,617 in the form of a motion.
Any questions or comments?
I have a, I have a comment. Just so everybody knows, especially the people at home, that the two numbers that were just read, the, the $1,263,000 change and the one here for $132,617, the MMO is the minimum municipal obligation. This is the amount that the state pension plan says we have to put into the uniform workers and the non-uniform workers' pension plan. So that's where these numbers come from. So we just, you know, we don't come up with these on our own. This is given to us by the state. We don't have a choice. So that's it. Thanks.
Okay. So any other questions or comments? We voted on this, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We didn't vote on it. All right. Line item C, Consider a Motion to Amend Article 501 of the Aston Township Civil Service. Commissioner Dougherty.
Okay, I'll read the ordinance. Township of Aston, Delaware County, ordinance number to be determined. An ordinance of the Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, to amend Article 5, Section 501 of the Aston Township Civil Service Rules to modify the examination scoring. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, previously adopted civil service rules, which set forth, among other things, the minimum requirements for each position within the Aston Township Police Force. And whereas, at the recommendation of the Police Chief and Police Committee, the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, seeks to amend the examination scoring to equalize the written and oral portions of the exam. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, believes that the revising the examination scoring in this manner will improve the pool of qualified applicants, qualified candidates from which to hire a police officer, which will better serve the health, safety, and welfare of Aston Township. Now therefore be it resolved and adopted this 15th day of September 2021 by the Aston Township Board of Commissioners, that Article 5, Section 501 is hereby amended as follows: Examination for the entry-level position of patrol officer shall consist of the following: Physical agility, pass/fail. Written examination, 50%. Oral examination, 50%. Background investigation, pass/fail. Polygraph examination, pass/fail if required. Effective date, this ordinance shall be effective 10 days from the date of adoption. Repeal or any prior ordinance or parts thereof inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Severability, the provisions of this ordinance and code sections adopted hereby are severable, and if any clause, sentence, or section thereof shall be judged invalid or unconstitutional, such decision or judgment shall not affect the validity of the remaining provisions. By James M. Segal, President, Board of Commissioners, attested to by Kelly Pippen, Township Secretary, in the form of a motion.
I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Line item D, Notice of Intent to Amend. Commissioner Barry, please.
Thank you. I would like to announce notice of intent to amend chapter 1278.02 and 1278.07 of the Aston Township Codified Ordinances to modify permitted uses in properties adjacent to residential districts.
Thank you. Line item E, Announce Another Notice of Intent to Amend. Commissioner Higgins.
Thank you. I would like to announce notice of intent to amend chapter 1293 of the Aston Township Codified Ordinances to update the wireless communication facility regulations to be consistent with the newly enacted Small Wireless Facilities Act. Thank you.
Line item F, Announce Notice of Intent. Commissioner Dougherty, please.
I would like to announce notice of intent to amend the Aston Township zoning code to adopt a Rockdale Arts Overlay District. And for the record, I'll be doing a formal presentation next month to explain the purpose behind the zoning change.
Thank you. Line item G, Consider Resolution Approving the Preliminary/Final Land Development Application of Dairy Queen, 5031 Pendle Road. Commissioner Higgins.
Thank, thank you. Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Resolution Number 2021-69, Preliminary/Final Plan, Land Development Approval for Dairy Queen. Whereas a preliminary/final land development plan has been submitted for a parcel of ground located at 5031 Pendle Road, Aston, PA, known as Dairy Queen. Whereas Dairy Queen has submitted preliminary/final building and parking lot expansion plans for Dairy Queen, five sheets, dated May 21, 2021, revised September 10, 2021, as well as a stormwater management report for Dairy Queen dated May 25, 2021, last revised August 17, 2021. Dairy Queen Drive-Thru Traffic Statement dated August 18, 2021. Prepared by Albert Federico Consulting LLC and Engineer Response Letter dated August 18, 2021. Now therefore be it resolved as follows, that the Board of Commissioners recommends final approval subject to the following: Compliance with Penoni Associates' Letter of September 14, 2021. Compliance with the Aston Township Planning Commission Comments of August 25, 2021. Compliance with the New Construction Committee Comments of September 7, 2021. Compliance with the Delaware County Planning Commission Letter of June 17, 2021, duly adopted this 15th day of September 2021. Township of Aston by James M. Segal, President, Board of Commissioners, attested to by Kelly A. Pippen, Township Secretary, in the form of a motion.
I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have. No? Okay. All right. Ms. Nottenbeck, can you poll the board, please?
Sure. Commissioner Dougherty? Mr., Commissioner Prendergast?
No.
Commissioner, gosh, Barry?
Yes.
Commissioner Segal?
Yes.
Commissioner Higgins?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Vote Harry's.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Line item H, Consider Resolution Approving the Final Subdivision Plan of the Sisters of St. Francis and Newman University. Commissioner Dougherty, please.
Okay, I'll read the resolution. Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Resolution Number 2021-70. Final Plan, Land Development Approval for Sisters of St. Francis and Newman University. Whereas the Sisters of St. Francis have proposed to subdivide a portion of their property and convey to Newman University. And whereas the Sisters of St. Francis and Newman University applicants have submitted a final subdivision plan, five sheets dated June 24, 2021, as well as an application and supporting documents identifying the parcel of land to be conveyed. No construction is proposed as part of this subdivision. And whereas, as part of the proposed subdivision, Newman University obtained conditional use approval from the Board of Commissioners on July 21, 2021, to use the property as a university and a building on the new parcel for student housing. And whereas, as part of the subdivision, the applicants request waivers from 12, 1220, 1232-02A, requiring a separate preliminary plan submission, 1232-05A, requiring a plan scale of 1 inch to 50 feet be provided, 1232-05B7, requiring the identification of existing utilities, and 1234.0, .10A1, requiring the installation of curbs and sidewalks. Now therefore be it resolved as follows, that the Board of Commissioners recommends final approval subject to the following: Compliance with Penoni Associates' Letter of July 27, 2021. Compliance with the waiver request agreement from the Sisters of St. Francis dated September 10, 2021, that sidewalks and curbing waiver applies only to reverse subdivision as was previously discussed, and does not apply to any future land development. Compliance with the Aston Township Planning Commission Comments of July 28, 2021. Compliance with the New Construction Committee Comments of September 7, 2021. Compliance with the Delaware County Planning Commission Letter of June 17, 2021. Duly adopted this 15th day of September 2021. Township of Aston, James M. Segal, President, Board of Commissioners, attested to by Kelly Pippen, Township Secretary, in the form of a motion.
Any second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Line item I, Consider a Motion for Appointment. Commissioner Prendergast.
I make a motion to approve Kelly A. Pippen as the Aston Township Right-to-Know Officer in the form of a motion.
I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Line item J, Consider a Motion to Approve a Refund. Commissioner Dougherty, please.
I make a motion to approve the refund in the amount of $75 to Earl Nunez, 100 Bondcel Avenue, Aston, PA 19014, for rental license fee paid twice in the form of a motion.
Any second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Line item K, Consider a Motion to Approve a Refund. Commissioner Dougherty.
I make a motion to approve the refund in the amount of $75 to Julie and Mitchell Berger, 105 Grace Lane, Aston, PA 19014, for a rental license fee paid twice in the form of a motion.
Any second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Line item L, Consider a Motion to Approve a Refund. Commissioner Dougherty.
I make a motion to approve the refund in the amount of $105 to Pico Energy Company, 1310 Point Street, 18th Floor, Baltimore, Maryland 21231, for property located at 221 Pendle Road. This property is not located in Aston Township. In the form of a motion.
Second.
Any second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. You want to catch a breath?
Can you say more to read?
All right. In the beginning of the meeting, we added a new line item, which is M, Consider a Resolution to Authorize Natural Land Trusts to Execute the Appropriate Forms with the Delaware County Planning Department for Delaware County Municipal Grant Program Assistance. Commissioner Dougherty.
Okay, a little background to this resolution before I read it. Several months ago, we were contacted by the Natural Lands Trust about pursuing potential green space opportunities in the township. Natural Lands Trust will be facilitating this process on behalf of the township. The first step is to apply for Delaware County Open Space and Greenways Municipal Planning Grants. This evening's resolution authorizes the Natural Lands Trust to submit this grant application on our behalf. Additional grant applications to fund this project will be submitted in the coming months. Now the resolution. So Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Resolution. Whereas the Delaware County Open Space and Greenways Municipal Planning Grant Program herein, herein after grant, provides grants which may be used by the municipality for planning services related to conservation, trails, park improvements, maintenance, stewardship, natural resource management, design, feasibility studies, and other related planning activities for open space conservation, trails, and park and recreation facility improvements. And whereas the grant may be used by the municipality for the improvement or acquisition of municipal recreation land or for planning services for such activities. And whereas the municipality of Aston Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, desires to participate in the Delaware County Open Space and Greenways Municipal Grant Program in order to help fund the Red Hill Road Fee Acquisition Project. Now therefore be it resolved this 15th day of September, the Aston Township Board of Commissioners, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, hereby ordain as follows: One, that the municipality of Aston Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, hereby authorizes the filing of an application for Delaware County Municipal Grant Program Assistance. And number two, that Natural Lands Trust Incorporated, doing business as Natural Lands, is hereby authorized and directed to execute and file the appropriate forms with the Delaware County Planning Department, duly presented and adopted by the Aston Township Board of Commissioners in public meeting held this 15th day of September 2021. James M. Segal, President, Board of Commissioners, attested to by Kelly Pippen, in the form of a motion.
Second.
I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. I'd like to move on. Escrow Leases. Commissioner Higgins, please.
Thank you. The following amount is for engineering fees to be paid to Penoni Associates for the month of September. This is a summary number. $13,017.75 in the form of a motion.
Any second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Second one is for engineering fees to be paid to Cerelli Associates, Inc., for the month of September, $2,645 in the form of a motion.
I have second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. All right. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor. If anybody has a comment, please come to the podium. I need you to state your name and address.
Okay. Mary Ann Bullen, 3235 Darwin Circle in Aston. Okay. I don't know what one I'm going to read, but the 19th Annual Aston Township Community Day will be held on Saturday, October 2, 2021, from 10:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. at the Aston Community Center. The rain date is Saturday, October 9, 2022, 2021. Bike contests and bike rodeo will begin at 8:30 and participating be at Big Lots by 8 o'clock. Rodeo sponsored by Newman Nursing Program. To register for bike contests, go to Aston Township webpage or contact Maureen Dillon at astonbikecontest@gmail.com or Dawn and Kathy at Gutman, G-U-T-M-A-N-122@Verizon.net. Great prizes will be awarded for the best decorated bike, scooter, stroller, or wheelchair in three age groups. The parade will begin at 9 a.m. at Newman University and ending at the community center. Anyone interested in participating in the parade, please contact Nancy Bowden at 610-494-5490 or email nbowden@comcast.net. Immediately following the parade and opening ceremonies, the Business Expo, which is held inside the community center, will be open. This is a great way to introduce and advertise your businesses. Anyone interested in the Business Expo, please contact Chairperson Ralph Schicchitano at ralph@curvisegroup.com or the ABA webpage, astonba.com. Throughout the day, we plan to have a number of different events, games and activities, rides featured by Betty's Bounce, bumper cars, giant slide, children's Ferris wheel, photo booth, and many more. Kids can enjoy a day filled with fun. Duck pond, face painting, pumpkin painting, rock painting, tattoos, cookie decoration, and a children's craft table. We did get our pony rides finally. Big shout out to my girlfriend Dawn in Brookhaven hooked me up with who they have as pony rides. So we will have our pony rides this year. Okay. We also have a special surprise that I'm not going to introduce. I'll let you come to Community Day and find out, but I know it has to do with the Aston Police. And it's a good cause. Come out and cheer our police to fire and fire departments at our non-annual wing bowl. Since we can't get wings, we're going to get meatballs. And we also bought them bibs so they don't mess themselves. Residents can walk around and enjoy trying samples of food from our food court, compliments of many of our Aston eateries. There will be hot dogs and hamburgers and drinks donated by our local businesses, along with entertainment from our local magicians in Aston. With all the events going on this year, I need as many adult and student volunteers as possible. If you can give any of your time, please contact me at 610-368-3102 or email me at mimi@comcast.net. I just have one. I know everybody wants to get out of here. But anyway, our citizens of the year this year are our police, fire, AMS, and healthcare workers. Anyone who has been involved that lives in Aston, that helped us out through this pandemic, are welcome to walk in the parade, and we will have a proclamation for them in our October meeting. Real quick, I would like to give a shout out to all the businesses who were kind and generous and sent in donations to help cover the expenses of the rides, food, and activities. It would be impossible to do this without your help. So thank you very much. It's been a very hard year, and they came through for us. We have a couple of new events this year, one being the meatball contest. We're, and the pony rides, we were able to get them. We have axe throwing. I don't know whether anybody has ever heard of that competition, but we will have an axe throwing contest. And there will be prizes. I cannot go without praising my committee and chairpeople who volunteer their time to prepare for this event. They are great. There is nothing they would not do for our community. I could not do this without them. Some of these events, crafts, and activities are run and organized by chair captains, such as the duck pond, the carnival midway game for children, cookie decorating, face painting, rock painting. With that being said, we are in great need for adult and young adult volunteers to help our committee with these activities. So please, if you can, give us an hour or two. Don't forget. Don't forget, we have hot dogs, hamburgers, drinks, pizza, ice cream, and desserts, free of charge. That usually brings people out, if the food is free. So any questions, you can contact me. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Great job in what you do. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none? Commissioner Dougherty, have anything?
I've said enough tonight, and I just hope to see everyone at Community Day.
Okay. Commissioner Prendergast?
No, I don't have anything.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes. Third Ward residents. Concord Square Stormwater Management Project has just begun. Hopefully, it'll be soon, soon, soon finished. Thank you.
Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you. I want to acknowledge Barry Pinkowitz in the back of the room there. Barry's the president of the Friends of the Chester Creek Trail. Is that correct, or? And last week, there was an excellent presentation at the community center on Phase 2 of the Chester Rail Trail. Phase 2 comes through Aston Township. And it was not a bad turnout, hoping it would have been better, but they explained what was going on with the trail through Aston, and what was going to take place, you know, the engineering, the work, and so forth. And they've really worked hard on this, and, you know, the part through Aston will take us over to Bridgewater Road from, yeah, from, yeah, from Creek Road, so an alternate road, I guess, there. So this is a great thing for us. So everybody should take advantage of that trail down there for the hard work that Barry and his volunteers and so forth have, you know, put into the project. So I just wanted to acknowledge him for that, so. Thanks, Barry. The other thing is, everybody should know the school's back. I don't want to get on my high horse like I do every year on this, but it's really getting old, trying to encourage people to drive slow in the, in the developments. In the developments, you have, you know, especially in the morning for those kids that are walking to school, but morning, afternoon, after school, kids are coming home, and they're crossing the street and all. People are just running stop signs, you know? And I don't mean just slowing down and going through, you know, I mean just going through. And the old California roll-through is not acceptable. You know, you, you do that, you might just miss somebody coming out between a car, or whatever. And, you know, you really should, everybody really needs to drive like your kids live there. Over in Aston, over in Washington Township in, in New Jersey, they have these huge billboards all around the town in open space areas. Drive like your kids live here. And I think, you know, we should be doing the same here. And I've had people give me a hard time when I said, why can't you stop at the stop sign, you know? And they said, your town, the town has too many stop signs, you know? This is a bunch of bull, you know? But it's not. So I defy, I defy any driver in this town to tell me why they can't stop at a stop sign. Is it that important to get where you're going that you can't even touch the brake and stop? That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Bowden?
I'm just going to reiterate on what Commissioner Higgins said. Many of you know I stand on the corner of Concord and Dutton Mill Road every single morning as a crossing guard. Not only do they run stop signs, they run red lights, and speed through the school zones that are flashing yellow lights. Many of us take our lives in our hands each day to protect your children as they get to school. I know I can speak honestly. I have at least 50 students that I cross every single morning, from middle school to high school, many, many times. I stand in the street as people do not stop for the red light. Please, whatever you can do, talk to your children. Most of you live here in this community, so please follow the rules. Thank you.
And, and don't cut through 7-Eleven parking lot to beat the light.
Absolutely true, Jim.
Commissioner McGinn?
Sure. So meatball eating contest, huh, Mary Ann? No, but it does make sense. When I was driving down, I had to do a double take. I thought I saw Danny inside Gennaro's, but maybe he's in training. Sorry, Danny, I couldn't help it. The, no, but on a serious note, just a couple of things. It's great to, and thank you for all the work with Community Day and everybody else that's involved in putting that together. It's a great event, and it doesn't happen without a lot of coordination and effort, and it's good to have that back this year. Speaking of being back, it's great. You know, we talked about the safety side, but it's great seeing, you know, all the kids out at the bus stop, and folks getting ready and back to school at all of our, you know, schools in Aston, Aston Pendle, Holy Family, Northerly, and Sun Valley. It's really great to have the kids back, and I'm sure it relieved a lot of fellow parents, you know, and, and made their lives a lot easier. Also, it's great going over to the community center, and, you know, while, you know, the township did what was right, and made sure we have that as a vaccine site, you know, the football fields back there with Aston A, cheerleaders in the gym and others, it's great to see that use back. And also, thank you to Pendelco and the school district for allowing Aston U Soccer to use those fields again. It's critical. And last year, the soccer association was stuck and had to use, you know, rent fields elsewhere. So it's great, they're, they're close, and it's a big help to the community. And just finally, you know, special, you know, from a, I might have, should have said this on the parks, kind of update in terms of committee, subcommittee reports, but special thanks in terms of my fellow commissioner, Fred Prendergast, as we look in terms of, with Aston Valley Baseball, and looking as they explore to grow, and the potential of adding lights there, and, and working with the community in terms of what's, what's achievable there. So more to come in the future on that, but glad to see that's moving forward. And that's it for me tonight, Jim.
Thank you. Ms. Nohmbeck, any? No? Mr. Friscuzzo?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. I just have one comment. Again, as Commissioner Higgins mentioned, the township municipal, the administrative office, and the police are making a move. We ask you to be patient with us as we make that transition. We're doing that for the health and safety of everyone involved. We are trying to plan it out, but sometimes there's kinks, so please keep an eye on the website for updated information, how to contact people, how to get to the new, new location. But again, be patient with us as we make that transition. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
One, one thing, sorry, Jim. For now, we will still be having the monthly Board of Commissioners meeting here in this room. That's for now. The zoning hearing board and the planning commission will hold their meetings in the new location. There's adequate space there to do that. So just wanted to, I forgot to mention that, that that will be the case.